So I'm going to call the public hearings over here. Good evening, I'm ready to say everybody and it's like church or on the back row. So this is the public hearing for the 2023 town warrant and handouts were available in the back of the room. I think we've got one ground rule tonight and that is the old golden rule, just treat others like you would expect in the tribune and we'll have a fabulous time talking about our town money for next year and making sure that we understand what we're going to be asked to vote on when we get together on March 14th. So the warrant, the first article is to treat all necessary town officers for the ensuing year. I haven't actually heard who has filed to be a victim in the next year, so I think maybe at the end of this we'll ask if there are people who'd like opportunity to sort of announce their candidacies and just have a chance to say hi to everybody. So we'll do that at the very end if that works. So Article 2 is, are you in favor of the adoption of the amendments in Section 9 as proposed by the planning board for the town's only ordinance as follows? And there's a handout relative to all of these or many several articles that are listed in the warrant. And that will be a ballot vote that will appear on the ballot when you come to vote on the 14th. And those amendments are necessary to comply with the requirements of the National Flood Insurance Program. And is there somebody in front of the Zoom here?
Yeah.
Who wants to speak, sorry, planning board wants to speak to that? Steve? Or Sandra?
So without that happening, I believe we're going to have another document as well as the handout or maybe it is the handout, but I'll ask Ross who deals with the planning board to give us the very short version of what that means and why.
So it's basically just updating the definitions to match the same definitions to the federal government. That's the majority of it.
Nothing really changes, it's just...
No.
We normally have a choice.
And these suggestions came from where?
From the Bureau of Office of Treasury Department, which is what the planning division. They had all ones that looked at the ordinance and suggested all the changes and brought the changes.
Are there any questions or comments about the proposed changes? And again, they're all outlined in the handout that was given. Okay, so let's move ahead. So once we have voted on those two things during election day, we'll be here from, I'm not sure what the hours are that day, I think it's 10 o'clock until 7 o'clock. So we'll be voting here in the hall on the procedures we do for each election. And then we will reconvene for the business meeting and that will be on Saturday, March 18th at 10:00 a.m., also here in the Grange Hall. And so the articles that we will deliberate and vote on in person begin with Article 3, to see if the town will vote to establish compensation for the town clerk in an annual salary amount of $40,000 in lieu of statutory fees. Health insurance or other benefits shall not be included in the salary amount. The salary for the town clerk in future years will be negotiated as part of the budget process and that's the majority vote.
So I'm going to speak on behalf of that or we were sorry to see Michelle though, but she's got some cool things happening that she's doing different and that's pretty much a net decrease from what the wage was for in the budget. So yeah, and she was one of the ones, you know, only ones that is on the ballot.
To clarify on that, the, this and the amount are written in support of and at the direction of the town clerk that is the only woman that's filed to be on the ballot. So this is supporting and with numbers as provided by the town clerk that will be on the ballot.
Any questions? Roy?
Roy Fandroid. Back on March 16th, 2019, Article 4, we voted for health insurance. It was a vote of 121 for 14 votes and it was by ballot vote. Why is the board requesting to take away the health insurance for this position?
The, so the sum total of this, which is the salary and/or benefits or no benefits, is at the direction and request with the appropriate amounts by the town clerk that is, has submitted to be on the ballot. So it is the request of the person on the ballot to have these amounts here. And they do not require nor request insurance.
So you're saying that the person requested that there be no health insurance?
Yes, I will actually defer to our town administrator who has more direct contact.
The health insurance is based on a number of hours worked. The former town clerk also was the administrative assistant at the police department, which brought her with enough hours to qualify for health insurance. Then our new town clerk will not have enough hours. I have spoken to her regarding health insurance and she does not need it. So that's what's going on.
Other problems, Roy?
Okay, I don't, I don't understand this portion about the hours. I believe on the 2019 vote, it did not matter on the hours. The townspeople voted for insurance for the town clerk, period. Not number of hours, but the way I read that article, they voted for the insurance.
Yes, so the previous issue and what the boards prior to the 2019 aren't filled, had I believe been trying to do was to do it based on combined hours. And since that was not deemed an appropriate way to do it, the 2019 vote that you mentioned here is the one that established that the town clerk position had the health insurance benefits. And that was regardless of hours, it was for the town clerk position. So 2019 vote did that. That is, that has been the way it has been up until this point. And the, what is on here would change that back to being just a dollar amount for the salary and no additional benefits on it. And that again is after the discussions with the town admin and the single person that has filed to be on the ballot as town clerk, which could you provide the names? I know Mike didn't have the names. Do you have all of the names for everything? If not, just the town clerk is fine.
Well, I do in my head. The town clerk who will be on the ballot is Mary Welch. And maybe I didn't make myself clear, Roy, but the insurance that we have, you have to be a number of hours before you're eligible to be on the insurance policy.
Okay, I didn't see that in the report of 2019, talking about any hours.
I wasn't here then, so I couldn't help you.
But reading the report of 2019, it never went into hours, it just said the future town clerk.
Correct.
And it was to give them health insurance. It never talked about hours or anything like that. My interpretation, I believe, of that meaning, I was clear, was that it did not matter, you know, the number of hours that the town clerk worked.
I personally will agree with you and that is the way that it was mentioned and discussed at that town meeting. I was here, I was not part of the board, I was out there asking questions at the time. So that was how it was described and how I believe it currently works. So if this were not to pass, for example, the, basically the amount that was set then, which I believe was $35,000, don't correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's what was in that 2019 article. So if this were not to pass, it would basically be that that same compensation amount would be what had been authorized by people as well as the benefits that would not be getting used because the new clerk does not want them. And so granted, we are presuming that the only person that's running is probably going to win, but that person in Mary Welch has given this figure and this desire to have it be this way going forward.
Okay.
And so that's why this warrant article is here.
Okay, got that. Next portion of, can I still continue with the question?
Please, Roy, absolutely.
Okay, if something happened to Mary Welch, okay, and things did not work out or whatever, would it be to the benefit to keep the insurance? I'll call it a carrot, there for that position? It, just something that's running through my head. You know, because if we had, if we had to get another person for some reason...
But then you'd have to drop the tag back to 35.
I don't know, it's something to think of.
It's definitely a discussion to do that.
Yeah, okay, one last, one last question, I believe.
And then I got mine.
And you've got that. Is there a way to not vote for the town clerk? Do we need a separate ballot where you could hire someone from the outside? Does it have to be a town resident?
We have looked into several of those different ways of doing things. It does have to be a town resident, it must be elected. We can appoint until an election if there is a vacancy, but that's the sum total.
I wasn't sure. Okay, thank you.
All right, I'm in Barbara, Karen, Dan.
Just a quick note, if memory serves, back then it was because it was an elected position and no benefits were available.
Correct.
And so once she took the job with the police department, then she became enough hours and then we had to vote to give her benefits and there was some disgruntled at the time about, but some of her hours are as an elected official and we still do.
So from what I remember of the discussion, and again, this is based on memory and going back into history, was that the boards prior to that had decided that because she was working both as an elected official and the other position for the police department, that it was enough hours to grant the benefits. And it was deemed that that was not the appropriate way to do that because elected official doesn't actually have a number of hours worked, even if they're technically working all the time. So the appropriate way, as was discussed to the board at the time by legal, was that they should pass a warrant article stating that the clerk position got benefits. And that was the 2019 article that passed. And so that has been the case since 2019. This would basically set the new amount and no benefits for that same position at the request of the person that has applied to be on the ballot.
Karen?
I was here in 2019 and I do remember a lot of discussion about this warrant article. And there was, the justification for the health insurance that I remember was based on her number of hours, that she qualified. But the carrot was people, I want to say this correctly. The issue was, they didn't want to make the issue about Michelle. So what the issue was, and the warrant article was not edited, was because they wanted to make this an attractive position should Michelle ever leave. So yes, it was a carrot, but personally, I'm your tax collector and I make less than $17,000 a year, I think $40,000 is a carrot for this position. So I'm going to go for this one.
And Dan?
Barbara summed up what I was going to say, that she was on both positions.
All right.
I just remember going back, there was discussion for years about this, about whether an elected physician doesn't get benefits, you know, no other elected physician in our town got benefits. And then, I mean, Michelle was awesome, we all know that, nobody better. She knows everybody and everything in town. But when she did get the police job, it added those hours and it banned her back and forth, back and forth. They went to municipal, Leslie and Nancy Scofield, both went to municipal and I've got the verbatim discussion that the selectman had with, I'm not sure if Wendy, yeah Wendy was there, I've got it verbatim, that they said that they, they couldn't really put them together, municipal said they couldn't put them together to get the benefits. And they also, someone at that meeting also said, well, it comes up to 35 hours, let's just give her five more hours, but she doesn't really have to work though. And I have it all, it was at a, at a selectman meeting, at a meeting about just that. It was on audio, so it's still somewhere. So I understand why she got it, I mean, she's how many generations in town, but I think this article really is the way municipal says it's supposed to be done. And like, like she said, that 40,000 is a wonderful carrot. It's, we're going to get a job for 15, 20 hours a week for that kind of money, it's good. And we'll be getting somebody good in Mary Welch if she's the one that gets elected. So I, I agree with you, I agree with you that, you know, this is, it's a very good warrant article.
So I just wanted to quickly clarify one thing and make sure that we are appropriately talking because currently most of the talk has been about the 2019 warrant article. And while it's important to know that it's there and that it passed, this is the warrant article that is here and is up for discussion and what is expected to be presented to the town going forward.
Anything else on Article 3 yesterday? David, can you just clarify the last sentence? It talks about in future years will be negotiated. So will it be an ongoing warrant article or will it be part of Article 4 and be embedded in the overall amount?
So the, there's two parts to that and that is the, in the first sentence, it's to establish compensation instead of, you'll notice in most of the others is to raise and appropriate. And I believe the way the original article was done was to raise and appropriate. And so establishing compensation means that it becomes part of the budget. And so as part of the overall budget process is the way that it has been getting done, even if that wasn't the most correct way to do it based on the existing warrant article. And so this has gone through our legal counsel, Dana worked with them, got the wording specifically from them, to be able to do it in the same process that we had been doing, where the town clerk would come, propose their budgets and put it into budget as has been happening.
Excellent, thank you. So it's a one-time warrant article and then it'll just be part of the budget in the future time. Anything else on Article 3? All right, follow.
So that 40,000, that's not in Article 4? We're raising that?
The 40,000 is currently in here as expecting as if it passed.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Because Article 3 does not raise and appropriate 40, it just sets it and then it's raised and appropriated in Article 4. And in the future, it will always be in the budget warrant, which I remember that was. Okay. So you're not doing it twice. All right. Anything else on that? Awesome, let's go to Article 4. Article 4 is the budget, so to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,643,029 for general municipal operations. This article does not include appropriations contained in special or individual articles addressed separately, the majority vote is required. David, are you speaking to that?
Yes. So I'll speak on this, I also have a couple things to tell you about the next two warrant articles, we'll discuss those more later. But it was my pleasure to start off by telling you that we have done what is near impossible. The operating budget is lower. Unfortunately, it isn't as much lower as we had hoped, but especially in this crazy and inflationary time, we believe this to be exactly what is needed in town. For the highlights, I'll first point out that despite insurance going up, insurance is lower due to a lower number insured. The second and most major reduction is that we have now paid off the safety building bond and are officially a debt-free town. So amazing. The major increases were the usual suspects such as employment costs, legal fees and welfare use expectations. Additionally, there is a large increase to the library as we return to the normal and expected amount. And last year was an artificially low amount due to the library balancing out their trust fund interest payments used as an offset. So the amount that you see now for that number is more realistic going forward. Lastly, I would point out a reorganization as we have consolidated the previous highway block grant section into the highways and streets section. This was not required to be separated and made more sense to keep together for the purposes of easier and more straightforward budgeting and reporting. This organizational change doesn't affect the amounts, but simply the presentation, it's now all in one place going forward. Unfortunately, all of the news isn't good. While the budget is down and the expendable trust funds are down 41%, the capital reserve funds are up 59%. The major driving increases here are for needed roadwork and last-minute needs for the transfer station. Most notably, the increases for the trailers and upcoming engineering for handling PFAS issues with D E S. This leads to an overall ask increase of roughly 3% across all expected appropriation in the budget and warrant articles.
And I just try to raise attention to the line-by-line budget that was available anyway in, so happy to entertain questions that folks have. Barbara?
What happened to the town moderator's salary? It's zero.
And you started pointing that out.
He might walk off the job.
So there are a couple, there are a couple line items that will look a little bit funny like that. And the short version is that for whatever reason, it was separated out from other elections. And so now the town moderator, who's basically just used at various elections in town meeting, is all part of election wages, which on the sheet is the third line item in the next section, Elections Registration Vital Statistics. And that, of course, the election wages is down compared to the previous year because we had less elections this year.
No federal election in November, so it's an easy, easier year. Other questions or comments on the budget? Thanks, Craig, it's 1.6 million, somebody's got to have a question, right?
Well, it's about the transfer station and the PFAS stuff, where's that money?
That is not in the budget, that is partly in the next warrant article, which we'll get to talking about in a moment down here. So I'll wait till then to provide more information and color on that.
Roy?
This one's for Emmett. Under the highway, he has fuel for rental equipment and it's up $3,000. What, what are we going to be doing? Because in my contract, Roy, when Eagle Fuel gets over $3.50 per gallon, then it comes out of the highway budgets. So that... That takes care of that. Add into that. So trucks are hour, the equipment's all by the hour and the fuel's figured in that at one cost. And then when it gets above that, then the town kicks in a dollar a gallon more or two gallons more.
Whatever the increase is.
Or whatever it is. That, that's why that's increased. Am I correct with that?
Basically, it covers the whole bridge.
Okay. I was shocked about the one up above, but then I read you combined the calcium with the road salt, the winter gravel and everything. Right, because we combined the block grant with the general maintenance.
Yeah, so if you look at the next section now, which is the block grant, when you'll see all of those, each one was moved to the same line item in highway block grant. Sorry, from highway block grant to highways and streets.
That's, that's what I thought that was. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so let's move on to warrant article 5. And this is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $578,000 and be added to the bodily established capital reserve funds under RSA 3511, the majority vote is required. And I'll read the list. Medical equipment adds 6,000, fire department air packs 20,000, emergency apparatus 80,000, fire department mobile communications 10,000, police cruiser 21,000, highways and roads 275,000, bridge culvert improvements 75,000, public safety building 5,000, town hall improvements 10,000, town office equipment 2,500, Webster-Hopkinson transfer station 50,000, fire department dry hydrant repairs 2,000, fire department bunker gear 2,500, highway equipment 7,500, police equipment 1,500 and highway land building fund $10,000. Does somebody want to speak to that?
I kind of gave the rough overview, but the question was asked about the PFAS information. So I'll give a little bit of color on that. We had Neil Cass here, who is the town administrator from Hopkinton here last night, providing more information. So for further fuller details, go watch the late hour of his presentation and discussion last night on the video. But the short version is that the septic pools and the sledge that had been there for the 30 or so years, that they were taking that in the location as basically everything at that point in time had PFASs in them, which are kind of forever plastic chemicals at this point and is a big issue everywhere. Those were found by D E S in the last set of tests that they had never expected or, or I should say that D E S never required or tested for in the past and never had regulations for. Those being found, they are now being required to do mitigation for that, which is either hauling and shipping it offsite to someplace that will pick PFAS material, which Neil last night said the closest place was Canada. And the second option is to basically cordon it off and store it on site. And so they are currently exploring the engineering for that. Over the next two years, their expectation is that through engineering and construction will be roughly a million dollars to take care of that. And as the town of Webster, we typically have a 25-75% agreement with the town of Hopkinton based on the size of our respective towns' populations. So roughly 200, 250 grand worth of that is likely to be heading towards Webster depending on how that works. The reason that you don't see this number being, say for example, 100 or 150,000 is because, hey, we didn't want to hit everybody with giant increases all at once this time. We wanted to try to separate them with different things that have been increased. So that might be required next year on this portion or this line of the funds. However, it's highly expected from both the federal and state governments offering various grants and loan forgivenesses for PFAS mitigation, that a lot of this will be able to be recouped from those programs. And Hopkinton is currently in the process of looking at and trying to get set grants. So we don't, we are hoping that we don't need to foot that entire bill. They also have a couple other options that they are looking at to have their local Hopkinton-based septic systems, sorry sewage system, work with and also be part of this, in which case they would pay for part of it as well to reduce the cost even further. So we're actively in talks with Hopkinton right now about how that would work. And so that's why we're not asking for incredible time in that line item, but it is certainly more than the previous four grand that had been there in that line, say last year.
Other comments about the capital reserve funds? Other comments about the capital reserve funds? Okay, let's move on to warrant article six, uh, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $133,000 to be added to the following established expendable trust funds for RSA 31:10-A, and a majority vote is required. Road preservation 100,000, technology fund 12,000, or aspire 2,000, fire department equipment 5,000, highway 5,000, legal for Webster 1,000, compensated abscences 1,000, municipal property maintenance 5,000, welfare 1,000, and police vehicle maintenance 1,000. I'm sure it didn't cross the next page. So that's the full list. Questions or comments on the, uh, expendable trust fund additions? Dan, was that a hand?
Yep. Dan does Webster, obviously. Um, why did the, this for Emmett, why did the road preservation go down $100,000 from last year? Are roads getting better?
So the, the short version of that is, uh, a chunk of that money was moved over towards highways and roads in the previous one, which is more reconstruction, uh, versus the preservation aspect. The second aspect of that is that the road preservation fund currently has a fairly significant amount in it. Uh, I don't have it in front of me, but I believe it's over 200 grand.
236.
So.
Okay. And I, I asked them for that, and they worked with me to change that.
Other questions or comments on this article? All right.
Um, I was just curious as to the technology fund, what that's all used for.
Uh, technology fund gets used for just about anything that's technology in town that we need it for. Uh, one of the things that we would expect we would need it for in the near future would be a replacement server for town hall. Uh, if you remember, that's actually come up a few different times in the past, uh, where the fund was actually originally created was, I believe, 15 grand set aside, uh, towards the, and there was 15 grand here as well as 15 grand in the budget half the time, uh, prior to me being on the board. Uh, and that was, basically, they were expecting, uh, 15 grand for the police server and 15 grand for the town hall server. We have since that period of time, uh, replaced the police server, and that's been working out fairly well. Uh, and we have gotten quotes for replacement of the server here. We're currently still living on this one, but we are definitely nearing the end of its usable lifespan, both in terms of capability as well as supportability. And so this is building that up. We hope we don't have to use it this year, and we can use it next year instead, uh, but in case it fails, then it would be jump on a new server most likely, and this fund will allow us to do that.
Because I know from the day I met you at town meeting years ago, you're our tech guy, and you did your shopping and your homework and everything else to get better quality for better prices. So I want to thank you for that.
Well, thank you.
And that's why I was just curious what this is for, because I know you're, you're a, a super shopper.
There's a, a second aspect of it, and, um, so there, there's two kinds of funds that we can take out of for the second part. This is, the technology fund can be used for if needed, uh, but it'll probably come out of office equipment, and that is that the copier is also at that same, it's kind of there, and we expect that it will fail soon, we're gonna use it till it does. Um, and so that way, we, we have done various quotes and comparisons to make sure that we're in the ballpark of it, uh, so that when it happens, we can take care of it.
I trust you implicitly.
Well, thank you.
And, and thank you, thank you all for doing what you have done to really squeeze.
Well, that part I have to thank our county administrator, he's done a lot of that.
Yeah, yeah, look, give him a little praise.
If I had to get too many, I don't give a hell. Other questions or comments on the funds? All right, let's move on to article seven, to see if the town will vote to establish a contingency fund for the current year under provisions of RSA 31:98-A for unanticipated expenses that may arise and further to raise and appropriate the sum of $16,200, uh, $620 to put into the fund. The sum is to come from the unassigned fund balance. Any appropriation left in the fund at the end of the year will lapse to the general fund. This is an individual warrant article, majority vote is required. Do we have an explanation of this?
I can give you that with me, Dana.
This has been on the ballot, um, for a few years. Um, it is a place that if you have an emergency, that you can, um, access funds to take care of that emergency. The amount is based on the previous year's budget at 1%. We did not use it last year, so those funds went back into the fund balance. The previous year, uh, we removed a hazardous building that the town had taken for taxes on Dustin Road. And I don't think we used the entire thing, but the, the excess does revert back to the fund balance every year, and it does not affect the tax rate because it comes out of the fund balance.
Are there questions or comments on this? Can I just ask a general question? Last year at town meeting, we, uh, and I think it was Roy's motion to add money for energy costs, because energy costs were such a, it's a roller coaster at that point in time. With this contingency and with planning and seeing energy costs under control, are you confident and feel good about what we have budgeted and planned?
Yeah, we, we had a fairly lengthy look at the energy use. Fortunately, we didn't actually have to use all of the amount that was added to the budget last time, uh, and so some of those items have stayed closer to what it was revised to, others have dropped back down closer to what they originally were. Uh, without taking into account the contingency portion, we are fairly confident of what we have going forward. I mean, we can't predict if it goes to like eight bucks a gallon or something, but you know.
Right. Excellent, well, thank you for that. And, and it's good to know there's always this in case.
Yes.
If this gets occurred. So this is smart, in my opinion, smart management to make sure that you have that contingency. Other questions or comments? All right, we'll move on to article eight, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $10,000 to help offset the cost of the bond for funds to repair dam. Passed at the Pillsbury Lake Water District Meeting held on August 5th, 2006, a majority vote is required. Um, just want to speak to this article, it's been here for a long time.
Me.
The?
Um, the dam, years ago, um, in 2006, blew out at Pillsbury Lake, so they're a part of Webster, and so the town has voted generously to help every year with the $10,000 against their, um, loan that they had to repair the dam. And the dam's up and looks good, anyway, and stay until, I would, so, and this will last, I think, about two or three years.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, yeah. So we'll try and hopefully do this for the next couple of years, and then we'll be done.
So three more years of having a damn warrant article.
Somebody had to do that.
Are there any questions or comments? All right, let's move on to article.
More dam questions?
More dam questions, is that right? That's a good one, Barbara. To see if the town will vote to read adopt the optional veterans credit in accordance with RSA 72:28-2 for an annual tax credit on residential property of $500. A majority vote is required.
I would actually request that you also read the next one, and then we'll have Dana speak on this.
Yep, and my understanding is they are tied together this year, and it's a, an initiative from the state, but to see if the town will vote to read adopt the all veterans tax credit in accordance with RSA 72:28-V for an annual tax credit on residential property, which shall be equal, which shall equal the same amount as the standard or optional veteran tax credit voted by the town of Webster under RSA 72:28, and majority vote is required. So nine and 10 are tied together.
First, I'd like to say that wording is not mine. That was given to us by the D R A. It, they've asked us to include it on the ballot this year in January, not Jan, July last summer. They changed this slightly. Veterans credits, um, were applicable to people who had served in the service. The optional veterans credit, which is the first one, you had to have served during a certain period of time, such as Vietnam or conflict in Grenada or something like that. Uh, the town then adopted the all veterans credit, which was, um, introduced later, which means any veteran is entitled to the credit, provided he's served 90 days in the service and was discharged, um, honorably. What happened is now the legislature changed it so that it's not only veterans who have served that are eligible, but veterans who are currently serving in the service are eligible for this, and that's why it's on your warrant this year.
Questions or comments on these two articles? Dana, I was told that both have to pass in order to enact a change. Is that your understanding of it also?
That is my understanding.
So you, you can't pass nine and not pass 10, you sort of have to both go into effect to enact what the legislature's enabled. Um, Karen, I think you threw your hand up just as I was.
I was asking the same question. Was it an either-or, we pass nine or we pass 10? Because it seems like that's the way it should be. You're saying we need to pass both?
Yes.
They, they both target different groups of veterans, and, but the change to both of them with the currently active service personnel would be eligible as well.
So does an article 10 warrant include article nine? If it says any veteran honorably discharged, isn't that also include both in article nine?
The, to not go into too much detail on it, the, the way that the legislature has written it, you can actually be eligible for both, but you can't take both at the same time as a veteran, uh, but you can also be eligible for only one of the two. I don't know the details as to what makes it possible for that, but that was the explanation given.
Dan?
Could we combine them as one warrant article if they both have the pass?
Yeah.
No.
D R A?
You can't make sense of this one.
I was gonna say, that would make way too much sense.
I tried.
They won't agree if they're on there.
My knowledge of this came from hearing about confusion somewhere else over exactly that question, and I can't do this to this one, but it's, it's required to do this way is what, um, the attorneys explained, so. We'll have to make sure, I think, at town meeting that we, uh, really explain to people because, um, I think the town has generally been very supportive of our veterans and probably will continue to be, but they should, people need to understand what they're being asked about. All right, anything else on that? So nine and 10, we'll go to number 11, to see if the town will vote to adopt the Webster Community Power Plan to authorize the select board to implement the plan and to take all action in furthering stare-up pursuant to RSA 53-8. The Webster Community Power Plan is an opt-out program that offers more flexible electricity procurement. The plan will initially provide water, electricity rates for residents, or it will not launch. Initial participation in the plan can be declined after which enrollment becomes voluntary. You may ask favor.
Not us.
So I'll, I'll try to give the, uh, short version of this. There's, of course, a lot of detail that we can go into about community power, but we've had, uh, as the Energy Committee has had a couple different public hearings on it. The short version is Webster Community Power, uh, will be partnering with CPCNH, which is the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire. And Webster, uh, Community Power, also known as aggregate power, uh, is something that the legislature enacted for us to be able to do in 2019, and in 2021 made it more beneficial and advantageous to do so. The Energy Committee worked since 2019 and then really fervently after 2021 to make sure that this happened. And so what generally community power is, is banding together to get, uh, economics of scale. So as all of the different communities, and currently CPCNH consists of 28, uh, different municipalities, including the county, uh, and several cities, um, band it together, the sum electric use is expected to be much larger than the largest utility that is in the state right now. So the community, the, the concept of scale and bargaining power is immense. The second side of that is that they are able to do a different model of power purchasing, and so again, they can manage it over time instead of the way that the utilities are required to go every six months. And everybody knows in the power industry that at those six months, the utilities are bidding, so make it a good price that you want to see the utilities have to pay. Uh, so overall, the expectation is that it will drop the electric rates. The way that works, if enacted by the town, is that that then goes to P U C to finish approval of, uh, and then it would also, uh, show up as the time to launch. And so when that time happens, you as individual residents, if you are on default power, which is you're currently getting it from either ever source or Unitil, if you are on that power, you will get a mailer, and that mailer says, hey, we're gonna start Webster Community Power, and we'll become the new default in town. And here is the new lower rate. Uh, you can choose to go with it, you can choose to opt out of it, you can choose to go with a third party, just like we may already do today. Uh, those are all your options. There is zero tax liability, there is nothing that will ever come out of municipal funding, budgeting, or taxing to do this. All of it is funded by the rate itself. And if you look at your current bill, you'll notice it's broken into two sections, there's supply and there's delivery. We only touch the supply portion, so all of the poles, meters, wires, et cetera, are all still managed by the utilities. Uh, this is purely to get you a much better electric rate, uh, over time and a more stable rate over time, uh, and that is the purpose of doing this.
Questions or comments on this? Comment. Barbara and then Dana.
Thank you. For helping everybody in Webster, Energy Committee, I, this is, this is wonderful news. One thing I gotta say.
Dan?
What is the opt-in, opt-out timeframe? So for instance, when Unitil drops a rate come summer, can we just opt right out? And then when Unitil raises a rate back up to 26 cents like it is right now, can we opt right back in, or, there must be rules along with this.
The general rules for opting out of the current utilities plans is around the timeframe of when they do their purchasing. So the, that six-month window for opting out of them to go someplace else, for example, Community Power. So we'll actually only be able to launch Community Power at one of those two six-month windows, uh, which is where that six bit comes from. As far as Community Power goes, we don't care, we have nothing in there, and it's specifically written to make sure that any time that you decide you want to join or leave, it's active as the next billing period. So you're, you're gonna be viable for the period that you are currently in, the next one you can be out to a third party or back to default.
You'll?
So if we can only launch during those windows when we'll say Unitil or Ever Source are doing their pricing, they price it two different times. So how would that work when we're on two different power sources?
To, to not go into too much of the details, that's why I say it's a window. And so the window basically includes, uh, the timeframe before and after both of them, so it's around that time. Because we, we basically, we have to just give them notice that we're gonna take their default, so they don't include it in their bid.
Roy?
When are we looking for the possibility of this to come?
When are we looking for the possibility of this to come?
If this is passed at this town meeting, the earliest it could possibly happen would be closer to fall slash winter. The more likely launch would be spring, summer of the year following, so 2024.
Anyone else? Dana?
Do you know what their current rate is right now compared to the two utilities?
There isn't a current rate because the rules through the PUC have been finalized. But the folks that passed this at their town or city council meetings last year are in the implementation phase of it right now because the rules just finished passing through the PUC like a month ago. So there are no rates yet. The expectation is that if you look at the way that Unitil and Eversource are in their bid model versus the Electric Co-op, the Electric Co-op uses a very similar model to what CPCNH will be using. And so their rates have gone up, but nowhere near as drastically. And so much closer to co-op rates is what you would be expecting at this point in time.
Thank you.
I can tell you that there's, I think it'll be eight. I think they're mostly towns. I think the ones that are starting, the wave one, and they expect to be starting in April. So then we'll see how their rates are.
Yeah, they're expecting to launch this year, this spring slash summer. So we'll be able to see that.
The Energy Committee's hosted two or three public forums on this. Are they available on the town TV channels?
Due to technical issues, only the last one is.
So there is one available?
But the last one with the full presentation and the questions is up there.
So for more detail, that is available on the town website. Can you take a look at it?
And I would also point out, go on the town website. Go to, I think it's actually on the bottom left. Let me double check here. Sorry, I have to find my mouse. It's on the other page. So on the easy access buttons at the bottom left, I'll hold this over so you can see it. So on the town website, if you just scroll down on the left side, Webster Community Power here will bring you straight to it. There's a write-up and then the presentation and the two-page explainer that was handed out at Old Home Day and other locations are all available right down at the bottom here. So any further information you want is probably in those documents. And if you have further questions after looking at them, please let somebody like Dana know and he'll give to myself, the Energy Committee, Marty, et cetera, to try to answer them.
Anything else on that article? Perfect, so let's move on to Article 12. To see if the town will raise an appropriate sum of $5,000 for operational costs of the Webster Historical Society. And this was submitted by petition. So is somebody from the society able to speak tonight? Barbara, thank you.
Am I talking to you or am I talking to the crowd?
Well, this is...
You can get up and talk to us all.
I just want to say the meeting house restoration is done. It's six years.
And it's great.
For a smart, thank you very much. It is wonderful.
It's done, all except your fire alarm panel.
Oh, of course. I did get the finer extinguishers though. I did.
Not done yet.
Okay, almost, except for some interior work. But we do have a couple of issues at the Highmark Station, which is where the museum is. We paid $5,250 in November to get the asbestos removed out of there. And it wasn't so bad. We have a water problem in the basement. They've put a sump pump in there for years. And that kept those asbestos tiles nice and wet. So the asbestos wasn't floating up. Well, we need to dry that out because the sump pumps failing. We can't, we had a dehumidifier in there and it froze. There's none of heat in there to keep it going. So we have to deal with that and worse than that. There's some, I don't know if anybody in construction, I'd like to call it a sill plate, but that's not it. It's pieces of wood that the building is sitting on. They're so rotten, you can stick your finger through them now. So fortune, is it sill plate? Am I right? So we have, and there's not many of them. There's only a few. And I had a guy graduated from high school. He was a civil engineer, came through the building and gave us some cheaper ways to fix these problems, which right up my Yankee alley here. So anyway, and we had to do some, what do you call that? Water vapor barrier on the foundation walls and re-landscape a little bit in the back to get the water to drain away from the building. The eaves on that house, I think, are probably six inches. So water comes right off, goes right against the foundation wall, and that's pooling in the basement. But they're not big issues, nothing like the meeting house. But what we're asking for from the town is just enough to cover, not quite cover, our baseline cost, which is utilities and insurance. Last year, we paid $5,500 for all of that. So we're asking for $5,000 from the town to cover that. And we were raising money with our annual auction. Everybody pay attention. It's going online on March 4th and it ends on Town Meeting Day. And the day after, you can kind of pick up your items here in this building right here. There's a signboard on the front door. And I'd be happy to pass these out to anybody who'd like to see them. But any money we raise from this is going into the Highmark Station. And we're trying to raise enough money to finish this. So we're just asking for the five.
Okay, so that concludes the articles that are on the warrant. Article 13 is to transact any of the business that may legally come to the meeting. And I'd like to circle back to Article 1 and just have a rundown on who our candidates are this year. So Dana, I think it's in your mind, right?
There's not much there. There are no contests this year. As I mentioned, town clerk is Mary Welch. Tax collector is our current tax collector, Karen King. Supervisor of checklist is Benjamin Nato. I should have brought this up with me, shouldn't I?
Select board.
Oh, yes, that's a good one. Dave Hemmenway. There is no one that has signed up for trustees of trust funds and there are two positions open. So tell your friends to do a write-in campaign or something. Because we only have one trustee at the moment, who is also Mary Welch. And I guess...
Can you just speak for a second, a little detail about what the trustee of trust funds do? Maybe that's why people are around you, because they don't understand it. How many hours is it? What's the commitment?
You know, I always like it when people ask you to volunteer and I say, you know, it's only two hours a time, you know? And you know, not to leave.
I told you that about the treasurer.
The trustee of trust funds are in charge of the town trust funds. So in other words, these items that you're voting on for capital reserve funds and expendable trust funds, they are the custodians of that. And when we withdraw, it goes through them and deposits go through them. And they do have bookwork that needs to be done for the state and for our auditors. And we've been very lucky that we've had some very good trustees that have worked on this. And our current trustee is excellent as well. So it's an important position.
And I would point out that traditionally, we have made lots of use of the trustees of trust funds, made them have lots of meetings because of the way that we have run other aspects of the town on trust funds, for example, roads. And we have now come up with a process that makes that far easier for the trust fund trustees. And that will basically be asking them quarterly instead of every meeting. So rather than several times a month, we're going to be asking them to basically set and reimburse back into the line each quarter so that all of the records are a little bit easier to follow, a little bit easier to find, both in town and for the trustees, and to allow payments to happen faster as well.
Questions or comments on offices first? Anybody on office?
Office?
Running for office, I'm sorry, the candidates.
Yeah, actually.
Yes.
Well, Mary Welch, she's saying she's a trustee of the trust fund, but she's now applying for the town clerk as she's quitting as a trustee.
That was an excellent question. Thanks for asking. No, she is not. And she is able to do that legally because obviously we needed to check that out.
Wow.
Other questions about the candidates? Sotare and then Kim.
Might be the same one. Treasurer? You didn't bring up treasurer.
Oh, thank you. Therese Larson.
Is the current treasurer in S. files? That's perfect. Kim?
In regards to trustee of the trust fund, is there in fact an educational opportunity? Whereas the majority of officers are in fact educated and have that opportunity. From my understanding, the municipal association offers training and would that in fact be something?
You are correct.
Okay, so there would be an educational opportunity if in fact someone were to come forward?
There would be.
Or be written in?
Yes.
Thank you.
And it's a safety and numbers position because there are three. So you can lean on each other also. Anything else on the officers? Craig? Let's do other business. Craig?
Well, I have a question about the trustees. You said quarterly. I mean, what happens if you come up and you need some money right away? Whatever project you're saving.
So the way that we've come up with doing this, again, big credit to our town administrator for working this out with our auditors and other folks in legal, is to, basically, we have a way that we can do it where we are using, is it correct to say the general fund? So we pay the items that would traditionally be coming out of the trust funds. And then rather than the trust fund having to take out for and make a check directly to every single one of those entities, they will make one check out each quarter to reimburse the town for all of the items. So they still see all of the items. They still see and have all of the same oversight. But it's one request instead of every single time a bill needs to be had.
Other items to bring up tonight?
Under Article 1, it's out of my collection, assuming that rolling day is the second Tuesday in March.
That's right. So if you look at the very top of the warrant, it states, I did it some there. So the polls will be open from 10 to 7.
March the 8 is a Wednesday.
Oh, yeah, you're right. That's the 8. It's March 14. So that's the wrong date in the warrant. That'll have to be corrected before it's posted officially. And free cash? It's the latest election date, the 8th, so the 14th. Anything else for the meeting time? So thank you all for coming out. Thank you to our select board and town officials for putting this together. I know they will be taking commentary from tonight under advisement and then voting on the official warrant. This is to be posted following the hearing, correct? So and at some point, I imagine, there'll be votes in there recommended by the select board, 300 or 201 or whatever. So that's the version that we'll see and be voting on the 14th. So have a great night, everybody.
Thank you.
I have one comment. This is Mike.
And you're not voting for your nomination for the district?
Right now?
They can't, they can't work on it.
Dana?
I got, I got one.
Stop looking, you're looking at it. You guys are over there. You can even grab that. I think that's how. I think that's how. Is that, yeah. Oh, no. I'm sorry. Oh, is it the whole of it? Yeah. Oh, I can't remember. I think it's, I don't know. It's, yeah. Yeah. It's a, yeah. It's open, so it's open. Yeah, okay. We thought maybe you're one of the one. Well. You heard Siri for a while. Yeah, it's true. All of them were pretty, that's why I came.
I'll tell you, no, that's why, that's why I, thanks for calling in. I know, it's just...
Jackson, Jackson.
I don't know where you are. Fashion, and he did three more. He's going to come here, then he has me, he's going to Florida. When he gets back to Florida. And then he's, it's on his way. I almost, you know, I almost, I almost, I almost. I tried to lose my life. Fortunately, I just... Thank you. That was wonderful. We have to get a real list. It's like, I, I... Have you ever seen him come down and cast? Thank you so much. Yeah, gruesome. Oh, I should put your, the, did we close the... It's, yeah. We're still needing... I'm, but I'm not...
Which is new.
I remember. It's, it's crazy.
Let's go, boys. David and Marlo, just maybe we're saying... The series, that's the problem.
We don't need that anymore.
Use the same one.
Yeah.
That's awesome with the energy. I was just asking questions. Oh, no, no, no. It's perfect.
Any more on solar? What all of us have heard. I mean, we haven't had a meeting over a year, so... Yeah, it's frustrating. The short version is all kinds of things that the president goes to get.
The page flip really good.
Is it still... You know, most of it was interconnected. Well, that's what I said. I was like, "Uh-uh." They haven't interconnected on that line, I think, too.
Well, so...
Yeah, and I said, "That's going to be a hurdle."
She's coming back.
From my understanding, my... Really, I don't know how to actually start this thing. But it's still... It's still... We're trying to get a handle on a facility that's running and rehabbing the high voltage. Nothing's changing except the new turbine. We need a whole new interconnect. And we're talking about a megawatt plant. So, yeah.
Well, it's...
So, that doesn't... So, that's where... That's basically where they are unless they have enough from that. And I know it's where the engineer and everything's starting. Gotcha. Give us kind of that... So, that's still what we're hoping for and expecting next. They wish to feel given the option. The... One additional... They already... They do like a fully everything to the town. The... But one of those reasons is that they did exercise their options for extensions or... So, they've paid to exercise that extension. They're still expecting more.
So, they need the people that...
I don't know about for every individual. No, we... Plans were not... But at least for the portion that is the transfer station and the ours was that option to extend at a certain point, they've now paid for that. And that went into a revenue for the transfer stations.
They suggested that we put the...
So, we'll see what goes forward. They're still expecting... That's good. I'm just asking.
I mean, I... I mean, I...
I'm not going to sit here. I'm not going to sit here and say I know. All right. I'll see at the town meeting that I haven't obviously... I didn't know about the whole... So, I will be reading tonight when I go home. So, are we offsetting most of our costs with the solar now and most of our electrical?
Yeah. Okay, so not really.
I can say that last... I have to figure out this year. Last year, we offset... We actually produced... We didn't... We didn't... We didn't burden them for electric capacity. We still had revenues from...
I make a motion.
The design was for residential, it did not factor in across things like...
Sure.
So...
We probably have a safety building. We don't have a ratchet.
This is a... Nothing on these two days. And there's still going...
They don't offer...
That's why... That's why the school has wanted to put in more efficient stuff than they can. Because they don't have... So, we pay demand charges, but they're still being here. And they actually give us demand charges for the... Because we can see when all the trucks and stuff are plugged in for blocking this. The... The portion where they're... Because they're all plugged in at the same time. It's not like you plug one in tonight, one in... So, yeah. I mean, I'm surprised that it's... When it's basically... 100% of the year, but they bothered to do it. It's a meter fee and then it was... It's another way than... So, it is worth it. So, we're sitting on that and... We get... We make... At least last year, we made more than we used. It's probably closer to that this year because we've been doing all the normal operations.
Right, because... We got people coming, the lights are on.
Yeah. I mean, all of the town offices were still open during the... So, that... Just asking. So, yeah, it's... The portal, I guess, isn't working right now, so we can't...
Sure. It's their portal.
I could probably go in and inspect that.
I should switch. Our cards are both... Mine is signing for herself and it's always like...
I don't want to... Possibly we can sort of... But you did think something else. Is it Unitel here or... Well, we can do that. The meters are physically present. The backside of that has... Both the solar meter and the... Right. They obviously get into a lot too. Yeah, but Unitel generally doesn't...
You know, you gotta get into there.
All right, thank you.
I'm trying to remember what you did to solve that.
Yeah, and they kind of said... It's a little embarrassing.
Well, we're not closing today. We have articles.
That's true.
Yeah, we've got to vote on the articles when we actually close. We're just waiting for people to go so we can continue. Or... I think we've took the show right now. So, yeah, we should do that. Everybody was dropping this. Because it's hard hearing.
Pull it out and let's start.
We're actually not... We're going to do our support.
Right, yeah.
So, would you go to have one more? So, what I'm asking Dana and what I have asked is recognizing that... Subsequently, that is the only time why will I...
I believe the conservation commission has one law that's in conservation.
I was in a separate agency.
I remember hearing something, maybe it's not directly on the lake. But there's something to that effect. I would have to drive it to one point.
I'm not aware of that, but...
Maybe it's near the lake instead of on it.
Of every single avenue that I can try to bring the attention of the church on this town. And I am... I tried to tell me.
This is...
You're not understanding what I'm doing. As to why... That's what you're...
So, we...
Within the boundaries of this town, right now? As a union of property, are they aware of it by the city of Concord?
So, we... Yeah, we went through with legal and we also sent a letter over to Concord. We had to draft that.
And what did they say?
If he hasn't... If he hasn't given you a copy of it, you should. So, can you get a copy of that?
What does it say?
In the meantime, we don't have it in front of us.
We didn't. We never did.
Okay, thank you.
Good. I'm sorry. What was... What was the response?
They had an unresponsive.
Absolutely. You'd be aware of that. You're on the nation. Because you're sitting in a meeting if you're me.
But I disagree with...
I have worked on this for 13 years.
But we do need to move forward with our...
Why should I come again? I have been here five times in this select board. I have been in all of this town meeting. I'm meeting yourself.
One inch of stuff, okay?
Oh, sure, absolutely. I'm more than...
I know. Well, we come every other person. Monday, whatever day. I know.
So, we usually try to keep official business.
Moving on, dismissed. That is... That is subsequently...
I have said multiple times that we need to handle this and I remember...
I just want to recognize that.
Did you get this? Oh, I just...
I have the...
And you were voting on the...
I'll need you to fill out the...
Make sure to take them when they burn down.
Okay.
Yes, I've known for years. Always like...
See, not to myself. And dance?
Kevin Sal.
Yeah. When did she... No, she's... The last time we saw her was at... Something about having dinner at the... And he left his car and his dog right where you walk in.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Just cracked me up. I'm like, "Bob, what's happening?"
Well, remember when... What do you like about the Chihuahua? They always had Jack Russells and... The little... They look like Westies, but they're smaller than that. I can't tell you. You always have like four dogs in the car.
They used to have... They used to have...
Over in pictures. One time... I liked that dog, those dogs. Well, now, Eric's ex-wife, she's got... She's got German Shepherds.
We are still alive and we're still seeing.
So, love it dearly, but we move on. All right, thank you.
We are looking to member into support of each of these articles. First with the three, which is the compensation awards. Just one in favor and one against.
In favor.
Yeah, in favor. So, 3-0. The budget, I assume, is probably the same.
Yep, in favor.
In favor.
And the capital reserve funds.
In favor.
In favor. The expendable trust funds.
In favor.
The contingency fund.
In favor.
In favor. The... No, three dam.
In favor.
The veterans tax... Uh, optional veterans fund.
In favor.
In favor. The all veterans tax fund.
In favor.
I don't know whether it's appropriate for us to be in favor or not of this because it is not a budget thing.
I think we should say what we are.
I say we're in favor.
I say we're in favor too.
Yeah.
So, then in favor. And then, we don't have to chime in on the one that is the historic society. Do it to be invited.
I'm in favor.
I think we should say.
In favor.
So, that covers all of them.
How's your stand on question 13?
No.
No, not in favor.
So, the next question with the... Michael wanted to hear this, so... Just to smooth that down things faster. So, when he announces them, it is firsted and seconded by two different board members.
You'll just remind us.
And so, well, he'll have it all written down ahead of time.
Okay, good.
So, are there any of them that you want to first?
Does it matter to me? First any or second any?
Yeah.
Doesn't matter to me.
Pick one or two, just so we can...
Okay, well, I'll do the Town Clerk and I'll do... I'll do three and four.
Three and four.
And I do that first.
All right, and...
So, that... What you're saying is Marlo will bring the motion for three?
The first... The first time I brought my own...
And the second?
Oh, no, wait a minute. I'm going to let Dave do four. Just a case.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Please.
I'll do the first of four. I will first for four.
First for four, yeah. I thought you said the first four.
All first for five?
Yep.
And who wants to second it?
I could second it.
Who was second in four? Is it Marlo?
Right, sure.
So, then we have six.
Who's seconding on three?
Yeah.
I could do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
I want you to be very strong and how... Oh, I can do it. Don't you be leaving me hanging.
So, we're on six now, I think?
Yeah.
Who's firsting six?
I can first it. I'll second it.
Seven, which is our contingency.
What was that?
Seven is our contingency.
No, I wasn't... Dana said, I don't want to...
Saying goodbye to people.
Oh, you're saying goodbye. Forget saying goodbye to me. Because we got shit to do here.
Okay, so I don't care. Dave?
Dave, you want to do the seven?
It doesn't matter to me, sure.
Go ahead, do the seven. Dave said first.
Okay, Dee's doing the dam.
Yeah, I'll do the...
And then I will, second.
Well, who's... Seven, who's second?
Oh, I put you, Dee.
Oh, you put me?
Yeah, you didn't know that? You didn't get the memo?
All right, I'll second that seventh. Ninth.
Dave, why don't you do nine and 10?
Well, I figure I'm probably 11, so...
Oh, okay, so I don't care. I'll do it.
Okay.
I think that makes sense, to have you do nine and 10.
Yeah.
And I'll second then.
Okay, Dave's seconding one.
Who's seconding on eight?
Uh, me.
Marlo.
Okay, thank you.
Because that's what I wrote.
If you did, then it must be right.
That's right. And then this is Dave.
Eleven all first and...
And Dee, you want a second?
I'll wait. What are we doing?
11.
Oh, one.
The community...
Okay, I can second that, yeah. Not that I wouldn't. I mean, that's awesome.
David, D, 12.
Me, I'll do that one.
Do we still do that since it's by petition?
You don't have to do that one, no.
Oh, I won't.
Oh, that's right, because it's by petition, so...
Barbara will probably get it.
Somebody will, yeah, somebody.
What do we do, scare everybody away?
Yeah.
All right, so that covers it. We have the notes to give to Mike and we have R3Os and you have your correction.
Yes, I didn't know.
And we can have all of that sent out and posted.
So, now we can adjourn the meeting?
I believe we are good. I would definitely like to adjourn.
Yeah.
8:27, I make a motion to re-adjourn.
I second. I want to. Go ahead, Marlo.
Seconded unanimously.
Shut her down.
Great.
Good night.
Just think, a couple more weeks, we'll be done with that. We'll be back to normal.